Real call to order to a regular meeting of the city council of the city of Two Harbors. Roll call.
Woodruff?
Here.
Glaser?
Here.
Reddall?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Passy?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Redden?
Here.
Ledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I have several changes to the agenda. First one, remove from the consent agenda item number eight, approving the request of gas, water, and sewer superintendent to authorize expenses for he and Brad Jones to attend the Minnesota Rural Water, Water and Race Water Technical Conference in St. Cloud. I'd like to add consent agenda item number fifteen, authorizing the appointment of Shane Ski as a temporary employee at the liquor store. Add new business eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a memorandum of understanding between the city and absentee local 1123 regarding vacation time for Rachel Williams. Add new business number nine. A resolution authorizing compensation for Councillor Woodruff to attend meetings of the Public Safety Committee, Chamber of Commerce Board, Energy Commission, FIDA, Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, Waterfront Committee, and Waterfront Task Force. Number ten, authorizing compensation for Councillor Glaser to attend meetings of the HRA Planning Commission, Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, and Waterfront Committee. Number eleven, authorizing compensation for Councillor Reddall to attend meetings of the Airport Commission, Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, and Waterfront Committee. Twelve, authorizing compensation for Mayor Swanson to attend meetings of the Safety Committee, Library Board, Public Affairs Commission, Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, Waterfront Committee, and Waterfront Task Force. Thirteen, authorizing compensation for Councillor Passy to attend meetings of the Safety Committee, North Shore Management Board, Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, Waterfront Committee, Waterfront Task Force, and Trees and Trails Commission. Fourteen, a resolution authorizing compensation for Councillor Erickson to attend meetings of the Cable Commission, CIP Committee, Recreation Board, and Waterfront Committee. And fifteen, authorizing compensation for Councillor Redden to attend meetings of the Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, and Waterfront Committee. And sixteen, referring to public affairs, a potential citizen appointment to the Cable TV Commission. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Uh, real quick, Patty, did we decide then in the last meeting to move unfinished business item number five to new business?
Yes. That's fine. That would be number eight. No, it'd be sixteen. It'd be sixteen. Yep. Excuse me, Mr.
Unfinished business item number five for sixteen and then, uh, what number for new business was referring, uh...
Oh. I think that's seventeen.
Okay. All right. Next, I have a motion, uh, approval of the agenda.
So...
Second. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Reddall?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
And then next I'm looking for a motion adjourned a regular meeting and calling to order a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input regarding approval of a gift property and approving the purchase of property located in the city of Two Harbors. Still...
Second.
Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Reddall?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
All right, we have adjourned the regular meeting and I'll call to order a hearing, um, for receiving public input. Shall I do a roll call for that too, Patty? Not needed? Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Costley, long talk, welcome to the properties.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll stand and support him if you don't mind. Just to bring you guys back to where we started, when I took this job, one of the first things I was asked to do was, um, address the, what I'll call it, the Ankrum property or its acre development. It's the property down by the wastewater treatment plant, and there's also a parcel on Point, smaller piece. At some point in time, there were negotiations with the city about buying that, obtaining that, doing something with it. So, um, I had a conversation with their attorney. I came back to this council and asked the council if they wanted me to proceed. This council set up an ad hoc committee. Uh, that ad hoc committee met. We discussed kind of what they were proposing. I was given a charge. Actually, I think I came back to the council. I said, "If you're interested in doing this, let me know. I'll put it together." So I got the approval, um, went and negotiated contracts, which are now before you, for discussion. Now, let me walk through the two proposals so you understand what they are again, okay? The first proposal that was given to the city by the Ankrums was, they own the parcel immediately west of the water treatment plant. It also runs a little bit north on the alley on South Avenue and goes all the way to the lake. Their proposal was, we will give that parcel to the city in exchange for a rezone of the parcel we own on Lighthouse Point, uh, to do some type of a commercial, I think it's still a hotel. Um, so the, the document has been drafted. What the document says is that, uh, Ankrums will give the city that parcel of property in exchange for obtaining favorable zoning for the project. We don't know what the project is. They have to come forward and go through all the zoning and then it, the agreement doesn't say you can do what you want to do. The agreement says, "We get the property if you get the zoning you want." If they go through the zoning process and that's not approved, all bets are off and we give them the property. So that's what the preliminary development agreement does. And that's why it's called preliminary, because it's in the very beginning stages. And again, if I knew what the project was, I'd have somebody here today to talk to you about it, but they're not prepared to move forward and I'm not privy to what they had in mind, other than I know it was some type of a hotel. Two or three level boutique hotel, I think it was said to me, but I don't know that and you won't know that either. So for purposes of the first item on the preliminary development agreement, um, I mean, you can sign it and if it doesn't work out, we have to give the property back. Everything stays as is. Okay? So that's phase one. During the ad hoc committee meeting, it was suggested that the city also make an offer to the, uh, Ankrum owners. They own the parcel from Culvers on the south side of sixty-one, all the way out, well, right toward Old Highway sixty-one, Castile, and scenic highway. That whole stretch along there. And, um, so I made a proposal to them to buy that. You'll see in the packet is a purchase agreement for that. Uh, the purchase price is the tax appraised value for that property, three hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollars. And that, again, no, that's a separate deal. That's a standalone deal. Either you decide you want to buy that or you don't. It doesn't affect the property down by the lake. So I drafted a purchase agreement after negotiating some terms with their attorney. It's a pretty straight-up deal. You either decide you want to buy it or you don't. And if you don't, I mean, that's it. They continue to own it. Um, I know the thought was at the time that if the city's going to, well, MinDOT's going to be doing Highway sixty-one through town and, um, if the city owned that and wanted to develop it, we would be in a better position to have utilities run out there than a private person. But again, that's a council decision, what you want to do with that, if you want to own it, if you want to develop it or not. So those are the two items before you today on the public hearing. And I just, there's a school of thought that says you don't have to have a public hearing for an acquisition, but I always think it's a good idea to do that so everybody has a chance to talk about it, understand it, so there's no misinformation out there. But that's it, I'm done. You, you guys want to sign it, then, you know, I'll make sure it gets inked up and we'll move forward. All right? Questions?
Go ahead, Mos.
Yeah, um, is there anything with detail, like if it has wetlands and how many acres and...
With respect to the Highway sixty-one property?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we'd, we'd be doing a delineation. I don't even know if there was one. I don't know if I talked to Jen about that, but any environmental, any wetland stuff, we do all that. I, I don't know if it's what it's worth or if it's even developed.
That's what, that's what I was wondering if that...
Hey, you can back up.
Research. Oh, okay. You can still back up.
You can sign and say it doesn't meet our...
Okay.
Needs. I know there's billboards out there. I was given a copy of the leases for those big billboards. Those, those can be removed. Those are, they're licenses. They got it from the railroad. Railroads don't like to give easements, so they give something called a license, which means we can take it back anytime we want. That I do know. But I haven't done any independent research on what you can do with that land.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Councillor Erickson.
Could somebody remind me who the ad hoc committee members were?
You would ask me that, wouldn't you? Um...
You, City Attorney, Councillor Erickson, it was City Attorney Costley, Miranda, Patty, myself, Mayor Swanson, and Councillor Glazer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Derek, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. Do you, did, there is a parking lot out there, uh, in a snowmobile trail. Are these covered by easements with the DNR?
There's a car called City Parcel there. I didn't tell you that, but there is, and it, I don't even think what that parking lot is is actually where we own property. We being the city, if we got that, I, I don't think it's even where it's supposed to be.
No, the city property is where the pollinator garden is and the city sign. The parking lot is not on the city car.
I don't know what I got there. I make no reference. I have nothing to do with that. I have no clue.
Okay. Um, okay, so the other thing that would happen is that it is eight thousand, six hundred dollars of taxes that would not be coming into the city if this were purchased by the city. Correct?
I, I have no idea. That's, that's, that's your decision. The money is your decision. My job is to put the deal together, draft the contract. You get to balance pluses and minuses.
Mr. Chair.
Right, Mayor.
Um, as I recall, I think it was in that meeting, we talked a little bit about the fact that we're trying to do some utility work out into that area. There's a lot of property out in that area that does not have utility. Um, and I think as I understood it, MinDOT's coming through in four years to rebuild. I think this was that discussion. If you remember this, okay. Uh, we've had that discussion in different committees, so I forget which one it was. But in that, um, that would open up opportunity for projects and housing out in both the, I guess it'd be the north and south side of the road there. Uh, I know it shifts there from east to west, but anyways, that was part of the discussion as well. That's an important thing to point out, that we've been trying to get utilities out to that portion of the, for the town for some time, so. Thank you.
Councillor Erickson, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions. Um, appreciating the dialogue. Is there, at first, did the ad hoc committee recommend this coming forward or was this just a directive to bring this forward for discussion? That's question one. Two, do we have to take action on this tonight? Is there a timing issue or can this press pause until... I'll be honest, I, again, I'm feeling a little overwhelmed by getting something this important and really knowing nothing about it to be able to vote on that. So that's just, but I'll refer to the members of the ad hoc committee, um, for further input.
Mr. Chair, let me, I'm gonna try and address some Kathy's concerns. Um, we, um, in our first parts of the conversation with regards to the property between the water plant and the sewage treatment plant, um, this piece of property, I think, is, um, probably the most important piece of property the city will obtain, um, in our lifetime because it's between those two facilities. With the construction that's going on, um, the moving of a parking lot from in front of the water treatment plant to behind the water treatment plant, the preservation of the walking trails, we felt that this was, um, our, in our best interest to move forward with the, with the Ankrums. That being said, that, um, Mr. Costley was correct, that, you know, there's no, nothing that says that the rezoning part of this issue would come, will come forward until it's gone through the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals and, you know, all of those public hearings that need to be, um, gone through. No project has come forward, so we don't really know what, what is actually going to happen there on Lighthouse Point. The second part of it was the, the property along Highway sixty-one. Um, again, getting the utilities in, I think, is more important for the north side of that piece of property than it is for, uh, the south side where the parking lot that Derek was talking about is. It's my understanding, and don't quote me on this because I'm not an expert, but I, I do believe, um, during the, the conversations at the Planning Commission and looking at the topographical maps, that, um, this piece of property has some significant wetland delineation issues. Again, if I'm, if I'm understanding Mr. Costley correctly, he did say that we move forward with saying, "Yes, we're gonna do this, but at any point we can back out." Is that correct, Tim?
Well, it is. I mean, but if you have concerns about it, don't sign the purchase agreement. We will get a wetland delineation now. There's no, there's no urgency to doing this, to be honest.
Correct.
In case of your time.
So, um, I guess, um, with that, Mr. Chair, if I, if we were gonna proceed with this, I think it's important for us to move forward with the piece of property that, that, that the Ankrums are, are willing to gift to the city of Two Harbors and move forward with that process. But I would be hesitant to spend that kind of money, um, on a piece of property that we really don't know enough about. I'm just concerned that there isn't going to be enough area there to do any kind of development on the south side of sixty-one. I guess it'd be the south side. So that, does that help, Kathy? I'm just trying to go back to all of the stuff that's going on.
Yes, thank you, Councillor Glaser, for that clarification. I think, um, understanding that there's some timing issues with the pro, the parcel related to the wastewater treatment plant area, I appreciate that and I think I understand that. I think my reservations are in alignment with your comments now about the secondary parcel on Highway sixty-one. Um, and I appreciate the work that was done. I just don't think, I feel comfortable moving forward on something like that tonight with lit, I, I just, that's a lot of money. I don't understand what our purpose of wanting to invest that kind of money at this point in time without having a plan or concept. So I guess, um, that would be my thoughts on that. But if I understand, then this, just so that I have this right, and maybe Attorney Costley can clarify, if we move forward with the agreement, uh, supporting the attainment of the property near the wastewater treatment, there, the, the language in the agreement stipulates that they would still have to go through the planning and rezoning process, which is not a guarantee, even though I heard the words favorable, uh, favorable consideration. We may not be able to get favorable consideration. Is that a fair thing to say?
Yeah, we wouldn't do it if we didn't. I mean, we still have to do zoning, so...
Yeah.
You can't get around that.
Right, Derek.
I guess that...
Thank you.
The question I have then is, we could not use that property until they did come in with a proposal to develop the other property, correct?
We can't use it now because due to the funding for the wastewater treatment plant and the fact there are federal dollars involved, one of the federal requirements is that they do an archaeological study. So we're, they can't even put a two-by-four on that land right now. We had permission from the owners to use it as a courtesy, but, um, I talked to the engineer last week and that's not gonna happen, so.
Go ahead, Derek.
Okay, the other comment I would have relat, this is actually relative to the preliminary development agreement. I would request that you include something in there that allows for continuous trail access across that property. Doesn't have to be where it is now, but at least something that perpetuates that trail connection that exists on the, uh, Lighthouse property.
Yeah, I mean, just so you folks know, that trail that runs across there is there. You have, there is no legal ability to have that trail connecting Point to Burlington. So, I mean, it is a great acquisition from that standpoint. You get that whole waterfront. I will try and do that. I, I don't, I mean, I only get to present our side and if they are not agreeable to doing that, they're, they're not gonna memorialize an easement, I can tell you that right now. Right?
No, I would, I would expect it to be the development that they propose has that, has a trail integrated into it.
The, the potential development? Well, look, that's a zoning issue. We can take care of the zoning. You don't want to put a trail and you don't have to approve the zoning. That's the right place to do that. Okay?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Jackie.
My hand razor isn't working, so I apologize.
Not a problem.
My question is, is just as far as that land out on Highway sixty-one, we're at the process now where we're going to make sure utilities do happen and utilities are out there for future development. Is that where, because I, I really can't hear you guys and I apologize. I would like to have been there. Um, but I guess it would be my wish that as this, you know, purchase progresses, that we do make sure that there are utilities out there on Highway sixty-one or where are you guys at? Because I really can't hear what's going on. And I apologize again.
Jackie, uh, this is Councillor Woodruff. I didn't, I think that's, we're gonna investigate the property a little bit more. Just to make sure that, it's got some wetland delineations and we gotta make sure that it's in our liking before we purchase anything. So we're not at the point right now for sure that we want to put utilities in there without looking at the property further. So we're gonna do that right now. It sounds like we're gonna put that one on hold and then probably go for the first one.
Thank you for, for the clarification. Councillor Woodruff, thank you.
Councillor Erickson, did you have something to add?
I do. So I see that on the agenda tonight, under new business, um, there are two potential resolutions authorizing, uh, could somebody please explain? So, uh, I'm, I guess I'm not really comfortable tonight with either one personally. Um, I, I'd really appreciate a special meeting to actually have heard this before just seeing it, um, or that there had been information prior to that. I do understand the, um, moving forward with the wastewater treatment portion, but I'm not feeling comfortable at all with the Highway sixty-one version. I, there's a lot of places we want to extend utilities within the city to be beneficial and I'm, I, without understanding that in context of all of the other investments we have to do or consider, I'm not sure, because that's just the purchase price. That doesn't even count for the, the utility extensions, which I'm hearing Councillor Woodruff say we, we need to review those anyway. So I guess I'm wondering if someone could ex, explain to me, of the two, um, resolutions that are under new business, one and two, is the, is number one related to the wastewater treatment and is number two related to the Seventh Avenue development?
Robin, if you'd like to answer.
Oh, thanks. And, um, Kathy, the first one would be with regard, the first item under new business would be the property that is between the water plant and the sewage treatment plant. And that, again, is a preliminary development agreement. We have the opportunity to back out. There's, there's no money changing hands. There's nothing being done other than now they could, if they choose to bring a project forward, um, they would have to go through all of the, the planning and zoning steps that are encompassed with that type of development. Number two...
Okay.
Would be the one with regards to purchasing property along Highway sixty-one. And it's my, it's my feeling that I'm getting from this group of good counselors that that might necessarily be tabled at this point, um, because there is further discussion that needs to be done and I believe that there's further investigation that we would want to do before we spend that kind of money.
Thank you, Councillor Glaser. And just so that I have this right, is the ad hoc committee recommending new business number one, all of those members?
Go first.
Thank you. I would say that, yes, we are recommending number one. Um, I, I would agree with, um, just the consensus of what I'm hearing from the council that as one of the members of that ad hoc committee, I would say, you know, we can table that and have that discussion at a, at a future council meeting. But I do think that we should move forward with, um, the development agreement for a piece of property by the water treatment plant.
Thank you.
All right. Any other conversation on that? Were there any communications on this issue?
Mr. Chair, I have no communications regarding this matter.
Thank you. All right. Is there, is there anybody that wants, from the audience, that would like to speak or in favor or against us? Go ahead.
You had your hands up already. Okay, go ahead. I just got a question.
You have to come up to the mic, Councillor.
I just had a question on the, uh, the acre that you're talking about. Does it butt all the way up to the Culver property? Because at one time, that's not...
I don't think so.
That's what I was gonna say, because at one time the city was looking at moving the liquor store out there and building something with twenty thousand or thirty thousand square feet or something and assuming that's dead right now or, yeah. And so we got the eleven, the eleven acres comes from, like you say, where the parking lot is coming towards that parcel. Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. My name is Tom Coler. I live in town here. Just a casual remark regarding the property on the east entrance to town. I realize there's wetland delineation issues there, but it does represent a gateway to the city, a chance to take control of that property and determine what kind of impression people get when they come into our town. And, uh, there would be some virtue in having control of that property so that you can control what appearance we have to the entrance to our town there. I realize there are other issues, but that was just one consideration that was not raised that I think is significant when we're trying to, uh, become a different city than what we might be now. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Go ahead.
Hey, my name's Todd Roney. I live at one thirty South Avenue. And, uh, just in regards to this, uh, property transaction down at, uh, Lighthouse Point, I recall, uh, I think it was a two thousand and six agreement that was made with that , uh, property owner with the city council then, that kind of identified... then, that kind of identified some of those two developable parcels, one behind the boat launch, one between the water plant and the waste treatment plant. And both of those parcels had some sort of a deed restriction on it where they were gonna allow a certain number of buildings and a certain density of, of development. I think the parcel behind the boat launch also had an elevation limitation. And I'm just curious if, if those same deed restrictions might not be the correct word, but if those same kind of limitations are gonna carry over into a new zoning appeal for, for that property, especially the one behind the boat launch, which is the one that's being talked about developed. So I just wanted you to consider those things, so.
No, I mean, I can tell you, if they're in there, they're in there. You know, that, that packet that I was handed was this thick. There was a lot of stuff in there. And I haven't paid any attention to it. But again, that'd be a zoning issue as well. You can't exceed, if there is a restriction, you have to follow it. So whatever's there is there.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Kathy, did you want to speak?
I was just gonna say, and that property is in the Charlotte overlay district, so there is some, it's a more restrictive zone than, than just our normal zoning. So there will be height restrictions that are different and setbacks that are a little bit different too.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
My name's Jim Bevan. It's a quick one. Would there any, would there be anything preventing this development group from progressing through the zoning process just by themselves without consideration for the quid pro quo of the other developments? That's all.
I'd say no, Mr. Chair. I don't think that that's possible. Too many, too many rules and regulations that we need to follow in order for rezoning or any kind of development to move forward. I've had that question asked me a couple of times today, so, yeah, I think that the city will move forward with due diligence and make sure that everyone knows what's going on.
Just for the record, Jim, could I get your address to you as well, please?
Yeah. 664 Old North Door Road.
Thank you. Any other appearances this evening? If not, I'll look for a motion adjourned in this meeting and continuing on with our regular city council meeting.
Okay.
Call please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Locher? Yes. Reddick? Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. All right. We are adjourned from our special meeting and we're back into our regular meeting. We'll start out with appearances. Number one, we have Craig Samorsky with Draw Events.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Craig Samorsky with Draw Events and the producer of the Tall Ship Festival. I just had a couple of things to add. Patty did a great job of explaining what we did last week. We had a meeting, which was probably long overdue, and we went through, I think, in pretty finite detail who's paying for what, who's doing what, what the roles and responsibilities are of the event. And I think that's what was creating a lot of the heartburn that was going on with the event. So there's that piece. There, the two other complex permits for the event have been done. The Coast Guard in Washington DC has approved the Marine Event of National Significance, which is an important designation. It brings a lot of assets to the city through the Coast Guard, through Homeland Security for the event. And then probably the most complex permit is the Army Corps of Engineers permit for the breakwater. That was approved two weeks ago. I don't really have a lot more than that, other than to add, I think another great thing that came out of the meeting is that I've got a point of contact with city staff now, so we can communicate very early. As Patty pointed out, she sent me some conditions today for the agreement, which I am totally fine with. They're things we do at every event we do anyways. So other than that, I would entertain some questions if anybody has anything they wanna talk about.
Go ahead, Rob.
I didn't ask this question at the five o'clock meeting, but I'm gonna ask it now.
Sure.
Who are you dealing with if you're not dealing with first day events?
Uh, me.
Just you?
Draw Events is a completely turnkey operation.
Okay.
It's actually foreign for us to work with another event planning company. We're pretty territorial in that regard.
Okay.
So I do all the ship booking, recruiting contracts, financing, sponsors, marketing, advertising, porta potties, fencing, barricades, security staff. All of that's under mine. And I, what I did last Thursday with the meeting, I brought a document to that effect that we'll probably add as an addendum to the special event permit, so you can hold me accountable for those things when they're all said and done.
And so you're taking care of all the food and beverages and all?
Everything.
That kind of stuff. Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming before the council.
Yeah.
It's, it's darn good of you to come and it's about time.
Yeah, nice to meet you too.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
Thanks. I just had a quick question regarding, I know that the DNR came to us requesting that we be moved forward with the permit. I just wanna make sure the DNR is still welcoming to have Mr. Samorsky and his team do that permit without us now.
Well, as, as far as my understanding is, anybody can apply for that permit and private businesses have applied for that permit in the past. I believe the reason the city was asked to in this instance is because having a municipality apply for the permit, the, the actual process of permitting is easier. I don't have a lot of explanation behind that. I'm totally fine applying for the permit. I do in just about every other market we're at, so it's not a real big change for us to be the ones doing that.
I just wanted to clear, I just wanted to make sure there wouldn't be a roadblock if you were moving forward, that they were still expecting us to do it. So thanks for the clarification.
And I, and I also, I did provide a document to Ms. Norgine today to withdraw my request to have the city apply for that permit.
Any other questions? Kathy, do you still have another que, you're good? Okay.
Craig, how long, when you made application to the DNR, how long is the process? How long does it take? How, be like, how soon would you know if you got that permit?
Well, I don't, I, my understanding is that unofficially, through Senator Box's office, that the DNR is okay with this permit. They just need the paperwork. How long it takes, I don't know. I know that the Corps of Engineers permit that was approved two weeks ago, it will be three months before I have the paperwork. And that's just because of the federal bureaucracy, but they said we're, we're approved and we can move forward. So I don't anticipate we're gonna have a problem with the DNR permit. We don't do, if you've not been to a Tall Ship Festival before, it is much like going to the state fair. We're only open during daytime hours. We have very low impact on the grounds we're on, so I don't imagine we're gonna have a problem with it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Craig.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right. Move on to administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just some things that we've been working on over the last couple of weeks. Consent agenda item number 14, which is the 2022 sidewalk project. We're starting that process and asking the council to order a feasibility report tonight that will be presented at March 14th meeting. And then at the end of March, hopefully we will have that project awarded to a contractor. We've been working on the PFA loan for the wastewater treatment plant project. We have new business number four. Also been very busy with our software upgrade project. That's going to take anywhere from eight to 18 months. Patty's been working on several new hires and some vacancies that we've had, as you'll see on the consent agenda item, new hire for our police department. We're also getting ready and preparing for our summer projects. We have the 2022 sidewalks, the wastewater treatment plant project. We'll be finishing up our 2021 and 2022 street projects. We're gonna begin discussions for our 2023 street projects. I know Jennifer's been working with Lake County for the Odegaard Trail Project. And we're also going to be doing campground renovation project. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the city attorney, Costley, on Southern Island.
Yeah, it sounded like a lawyer full of wine after he... I don't mean that in a mean way, but it is. I've got about eight questions that you guys have asked me to answer. But let me start off with something. What I want to ask of this council is, and I, I can appreciate all of you have legal questions that you wanna have answered, but I don't represent just one of you. I represent the entire group. So what I would ask is if you have a legal question, you submit it to the administrator, submits it to me, and I'll, I'll get you an answer. But here's the problem. When I get individual requests for legal advice, the rest of you may not want me to do the legal research and answer the question. So I'm gonna do this work, I'm gonna send you a bill, and you're gonna look at me and say, what are you doing, Costley? And we didn't ask you to do that, okay? So that's the, that's the concern I have, is when I get these individual requests, I would like them to come before the council and have the council say, yes, go ahead, research it, and give us an answer. So I'm not just out doing freewheeling legal work, okay? Having said that, I've had some questions that were asked that I will answer today briefly because I think they're significant, they're timely. One of the things that came to me is a request about serial meetings and how do you deal with talking with other councilors? Let me tell you what, a real, and, and it's open meeting law stuff. Open meeting law is designed so people like this can sit here, you're not having conversations amongst yourselves and making decisions that people can't hear. That's open meeting law. The general rule is that if you are in a quorum, all right, you know what a quorum is? Open meeting law violation occurs. It's for with you people, okay? But that's not to say that you individually can talk to each other about council matters, okay? The law doesn't wanna stifle that. It wants to let you have conversations with each other, one-on-one. You can do that. And there's a, there's this Mulberry case, famous case in Minnesota that says, yes, let's let council members do that. But serial meeting. I've heard people throw around the term serial meeting. What does that mean? Well, a serial meeting is when one person goes to the six other members and tries to get you to decide how you're gonna vote on Monday. That's, that's the short story of a serial meeting. So what I want you to remember, if you are meeting in less than a quorum, you are fine, unless you are doing one of these three things. You're having a meeting to avoid public discussion on a topic, you're having a meeting to forge a majority opinion at an upcoming meeting, again, going to everybody and saying, I need you to vote, vote, vote when we come to Monday, or hiding improper influences such as a personal or financial interest of a public official. Any of those conversations are in fact. And I wanna make sure you're clear on that, okay? Cause we've had some hard discussions in this room for me about conflicts of interest, but this is a communications issue and I wanna make sure you understand it, okay? So one council member can, can have a conversation with all of you. That person can give you information to share, all right? I always suggest, and I think the best practice is, if you're going to share information, however, you're gonna share documents, you send it to the administrator and you put it on the agenda. Then you don't ever have to worry about it. But don't be afraid of talking to each other, okay? So that was one of the questions that came up. And intent is always the key here. What is your intent for having a conversation? Do you have an nefarious motive for having the conversation? Or do you really wanna have a conversation with the other council member about something that's coming up and maybe you need to understand it better? Maybe you think that person doesn't understand it as well as you. You could do that. I have a question about conflict of interest for people on the council whose employees sign a contract with the city, okay? Which we've got, Robin works for the hospital, council member Passy works for the county, and council member Reddick works for the chamber. How do you handle that? Well, Attorney General says this, you can, as a council, have a contract with an employer of a council member if that council member has no ownership interest in the firm. That council member is neither an officer or a director of their employer. That council member is compensated by salary or an hourly basis and receives no commissions, bonuses, or other compensation. And the council member's not involved in supervising the performance. That's the Attorney General's opinion about contracts with employers of council members. So you know, that was a question that came up. And those are the, those are the four guidelines they give us to work with, okay? And I'm gonna be back up here in a little bit. But lastly, I've been asked numerous times to do a conflict of interest policy review. So we were here a couple of weeks ago and we had all of the conflict of interests language in front of you, from the code, from the charter, from the state statute, right? Honestly, I don't see a lot of difference between the three. I just don't. And the state statute is the minimum. You can't go below that, direct or indirect financial interest. Our code and our charter goes a little further in some instances, okay? With transactions instead of contracts. But, you know, I don't, I don't get to make a recommendation for a conflict of interest policy. If I wrote it, you probably wouldn't be able to do anything, cause I'm a lawyer, right? I wanna have that thing locked down. You folks have to say, look, we don't like this, we don't like that. Tighten it up, loosen it up, or leave it, okay? When, when we went down this road, we saw things about family members' interest and, I mean, you could put all that stuff in your code. You can make it as tight as you want. You can put that in your charter. Or you can take it all out and just say, we're gonna follow the state statute. But when you say to me, take a look at it, well, I've taken a look at it. And I, I, personally, I would tighten it up if it was me, but you guys get to decide what to do with that, okay? So one of the action items down the road, I don't even think it's on for tonight, but I need a little more direction from you about where you wanna go with this. So you have to go back and read those things that we talked about two weeks ago and say, this is what we wanna look at. And I'll do it, okay? That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Since we're on this point, I think one of the things that's really become crystal clear to me, Mr. Costley, is process. You know, you mentioned in the last meeting, there's a, a process. I think that would, at least for me and talking to some other councilors, would really help us understand, okay, you've mentioned last time, come to the city attorney. At what point do you come to the city attorney? What is the process that we go through in certain situations? For example, we had the other day, Counselor Passy left the room. What is the, the process and the policy we wanna have around, you know, do you leave the room? Do you stay in the room? Cause I've been talking to a lot of cities about this. And there's some cities in Minnesota where the person, if they have a conflict, sits right in the room and gets to answer questions, cause they get to be a citizen. There's some cities where they have to leave the room. There's some cities where they only abstain. All of them allow a conflict of interest in my research, but they all basically say, hey, you have to disclose it, okay? And there's a process if you go through that. So that's what I think we're struggling with, cause we've heard a little bit different from you than past council. And I think if we understood that process, and maybe that's not your job to write the process, maybe that's your saying, we need to say, here's what we want the process to be, but I think that would be extremely beneficial. Does that make sense?
Well, it does. I'll write a process, okay? But there is still a minimum bar that you cannot go below.
Sure.
And I don't care what six other cities do. All I care about is what you guys do. That's all I care about.
Right.
We're gonna follow the minimum standards and if you want them higher, we'll do that.
Okay.
That's all we can do. That's all we can do. I can tell you a process, but let me tell you what. Conflict of interest isn't rocket science. You know, as an individual, that something is coming up that you may have an interest in. You don't need to read a procedure. You don't even need to read a statute, right? That's what they teach you as a young attorney. If it doesn't feel right, it's probably not right. So I can get as detailed as you want, but it always comes down to your individual discretion and your transparency about whether there's a conflict. If there's even a doubt, disclose. There's no reason not to. I don't wanna play games with words and have it all, because it doesn't read exactly what the conflict interest law is supposed to do. Conflict interest law is a purpose. Does that make sense? The purpose is to avoid the appearance of enterprise. Doesn't matter how you're in.
Okay, I have a question. You said, uh, he's... The Public, oh, let's use Public Works Committee, is only three members. So that would mean if I'm talking to another member of the Public Works Committee, that represents quorum.
That's right.
So we cannot talk about agenda items except at the Public Works meeting.
Quorum is the key trigger. That's the first trigger is quorum.
Yep.
Go ahead, Councilor Harrison.
Thank you, and thank you for this clarification information. This was really helpful. And I think to kind of piggyback off Mayor Swanson, I think there's two things happening here. One is communication and how we communicate with each other. And then there's the conflict of interest or potential serial meeting and open meeting law issues. One thing Attorney Costley, if you could clarify, there's always the... Administration can always communicate with council, correct? So if there's a issue or concern that I have, I can, as you recommended, forward it on to the administrator or the city clerk or to you and say, "I think it's important that all counselors hear this." If I were to send it to everybody, "I'm having a serial meeting, but if you as administration share this information and no one replies," because that's the other piece, I know you shared at Correspondence last week, that said, "Please don't reply to this, because that could constitute a serial meeting by responding." And I do think we do have some communication policies already through the work that was done through Public Affairs several years ago. That's part of the Public Affairs communication work. And I think maybe working hand-in-hand with Attorney Costley would be very helpful to either solidify some of those general communication things that may or may not be directly tied to, say, an open meeting law violation, but just to clarify and maybe resend that out to all of us as reminders of how best to communicate with others. But I really appreciate that you would be willing to continue to provide us guidance and clarification on that. So thank you so much for this. This was very helpful for me.
I just wanna say, I remember going to newly elected officials down at the state, and they go over all this. I think some of this is getting overcomplicated. I like, I think, you said it's pretty... They teach you that, by newly elected officials. They tell you what a conflict of interest is. They tell you what you can and can't do. I mean, I was pretty clear. I think it's getting overcomplicated. I don't know. And if anybody didn't go to newly elected officials, maybe they should, because I think they got a whole bunch of lawyers there, and they tell you what you can and can't do. So I just wanna say that.
Thank you, Miles. Councilor Harrison, did you have something else to add? Nope, alright. Not, um, we'll move on to committee reports. The Public Affairs, uh, excuse me, Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met and a big chunk of what we talked about was actually the process. We wanna have a more open process for community members to be able to get to our meetings and speak. And so we've been working on that, and we asked our administration, as was discussed earlier, to come back to Public Affairs and bring that back with their recommendations. So that's what we talked about. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Planning Commission.
Thank you. The Planning Commission has, of course, been busy with all kinds of fun projects, but our last meeting, we did review the land use portion of the comprehensive plan to see if the parcels that we were discussing earlier in the meeting fit into that plan. And it was a consensus that, yep, they do. And so that took up a significant part of our meeting, but I was very impressed with the rest of our meeting. We worked very hard on looking at some revisions and revamping of the short-term rental ordinance. There was just some really good discussion that went on. I'm hoping that we can continue that at our next meeting, and I don't know if there was anything else, Jen.
No, we have a meeting tomorrow night, and then we decided to have two meetings a month while we work through the short-term.
Thank you. Yeah, we are gonna meet twice a month, because we just wanna get that shored up and ready to move.
Great. Do you guys have a second day to handle them?
Um, we're gonna, I think what Jen proposed was we were gonna do the second, the Thursday and the third Tuesdays, if that's correct.
Yes, because it would be consistent with what we did for the zoning code update, too, so the two.
Yeah, I'm working through all of the council meetings if need be.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. That's right. Energy Commission.
Yes, we met on the 16th of this month. We met with Paul Lemire. He came up in November, and that's probably the best news I've heard on energy in a long time. His opinion, and he owns a lot of tugboats, is that it is in no dangerous thinking. We got access to a part under the coal bunkers through the floor where they could look at it. It still needs to be looked at more thoroughly, but they don't... He thinks it's one of the best tugs for its age on all of Lake Superior. And he's involved with a whole bunch. So it was nice to hear that. They have more people coming up, steam expert. He said it could steam, again, if the city wanted. That's, there's a lot of options as we've been dealing with the energy as time goes on. There's a lot of different things that could happen. He's gonna be coming back up here in March, I believe, sometime, with a steam expert and a guy, guys that are, you'd call them bullet nerds. They're obsessed with tugboats, so we're looking forward to having them come up. And then he'll give us a report in June on everything he's done. And we took the bollards out because of, he made a E and R permit, we'll buy it next year. It should be good this year for the rest of the year. And then I just wanted to say that friends at Energy, they're doing an incredible job. They just got a $25,000 donation from a random person, so... And they do a lot. They're very involved with energy, too, so I just wanna give them some recognition.
That's great.
That's all.
Thank you. Utilities Committee met on February 16th. We had a nice meeting with Fred McFarland and Lon Larson from Castle Danger Brewery over the Castle Danger Monitoring Station and their Significant Industrial User Agreement. And we're working through several things that they wanted to talk about and to do with the building for that station. And then we're looking into the Significant Industrial User Agreement moving forward with them. And then we also talked about the 2023 street project to consider 500 block of Fourth Avenue due to more dense utilities underneath that, if I'm not mistaken. Was that correct, Robin?
I think so. There was a lot of streets talked about. Of course, we were right in the middle of that water break that, you know, we looked up eons of time and found out that that one was 13 feet underground or something ridiculous, so, yeah, we talked about that.
And if, do you guys, anybody else from the committee have anything else to add to that? Alright, that's that. Personnel Committee.
Oh, thank you. The Personnel Committee reviewed a request from Gerald Lumet to add an additional two weeks of vacation time to his HSA account. Mr. Lumet retired 12/1 of 21.
22?
21. Good. We referred, we decided we were gonna refer that back to our personnel attorney, Mr. Flatter, and let him make the final.
Mr. Pittsman.
Pittsman, thank you. Just because that was who Patty and Miranda had been talking with with regards to this request originally back in November. Patty and Miranda were able to have a conversation also with regards, with him regarding an interim city administrator position. The possibility would be to have somebody for about six months. And Brandon is working on finding candidates that we can review their credentials and then decide on a process to interview those folks. One of the big things that was discussed and was, what Miranda said was, is that that he thinks that we need to have a specific set of goals and tasks in place for the interim city administrator with regards to helping us find our permanent replacement. So that process is going to continue on. Personnel Committee is gonna review the job description of the administrator just to make sure that we have it up to date so that we can keep that process moving forward. Then we talked about some openings that are still, that are, we're still working on with regards to Public Works Specialist III positions and hoping that we can get those moving forward. And our goal is to make, to decide by, we give them four weeks to get the needed time in the greater, which shouldn't be an issue right now, so that this person can be moved up into that position. And if that doesn't, if we don't get there, then I think we're gonna have to look at moving in a different direction. That's, and we talked about a possible cable TV coordinator or some kind of assistant. We know that there's issues with the Zoom conversation or the Zoom audio. It's been kind of a difficult ride for all of us. So we're gonna continue to look at the possibility of possibly a six-month temporary candidate for that position. Most likely, that would be a contracted position for six months. And then we did have to send a message back to our former Public Works Director regarding his request for back pay, which was also removed by Flattery and Hood. And then we're waiting for one more document for the Public Works Director to bring, or the assistant, the interim Public Works Director to bring in regarding a project for Public Works, and then we're hoping that we can move forward with a permanent position there. There was a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you. In regards to the administrative position, it was really hard to hear constant bluster. And I appreciate that they are pursuing the position of the city administrator, which is something that I have been nibbling at for a while. And I would like to maybe see, I guess I would like a clarification where we're at, provide in detail how our taxpayers are being compensated for what they're paying in regards to what they're getting with a city administrator. This is an issue that's gone on for months. And I know it was back in January and December that I started talking about this. And the position has been vacant since July and August. I just really wanna make sure that if we're gonna get, I don't think an interim person is what we want. I think we want to find the right person for the job. And I know the idea is, who would want to come in right now when we're at this point of how things are going? But I think to me, that's the best person to want to come in right now and say, "I will help you." And I guess I'm just looking for more clarification, maybe even, you know, I appreciate what the staff has done. They have gone above and beyond. They have done amazing work doing multiple jobs. And I just want to know if maybe the next meeting they can provide us with the timeline as far as where things are gonna be, and even compensation for staff that the taxpayers have been paying for, what they've been receiving in return. Thank you.
I don't know where to start.
Let's hear the Personnel Committee, what I say something.
I'll try. Let me try. Well, first of all, as far as the timeline goes, that is dependent on how many candidates we can find that are willing to move to Harbors. We did talk with the council down at Flattery and Hood, and they believe that it's in our best interest to move forward. First, with an interim city administrator that can help us through the process. With regards to the other questions, Jackie, as far as compensation goes, I don't know that the compensation has changed any since the two took over as, since Miranda took over as interim city administrator and since Patty took over as assistant interim city administrator. There was some language clarification at one of our meetings regarding the difference between a salaried employee and an hourly employee with regards to how they're compensated. But otherwise, nothing has really changed in that regard. We're hoping that we can bring forward a couple of candidates to interview, get them on board, and then sit down as a group to make sure we have the proper questions with regards to goals at moving forward to find ourselves a permanent city administrator. I understand you feel the urgency to do this, but I also want you to remember that this is probably one of the bigger, probably the biggest positions we are going to hire in our tenure. Just remember back, we were busy hiring a new attorney after Mr. Walker left. We've had some other things come up that have probably waylaid the process a little bit longer than any of us anticipated. But we are continuing to move forward with the process.
So then, it, no, huh? No. So if I may, then it would be okay for you to, or for someone to be able to clarify how the compensation has happened? I know we had to find a new attorney, but I think also, I mean, finding where this compensation, has there been any compensation regarding what's been happening with the administrator and why it's been taking so long? And do we have, you know, a way to, I guess, you know, show the changes in the compensation that's been happening for the administrative staff that it's taken this long to get us going? And now we're looking for just a temporary administrator? What has been happening? What, I would like to see a record of what has been done.
Excuse me, I've been called on. Counselor Redwall, the compensation for Miranda and I is minimal, so it is significantly less than what you were paying for the former administrator. I can tell you the amount is somewhere in the amount of $2 to $3 per hour in addition to our normal compensation. So your concern is, and it certainly is allowed to be tracked. We track every single cent that we spend on the city's money, especially with regard to payroll. We'll be glad to have that report on your desk when you return.
Thank you. That would be great.
Alright, we'll move on. Kathy, go ahead, Kathy, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, just so, the administrator position has not been vacant. We made a contract, we made an agreement, we have a position that's being filled. So I want to make sure the people who are listening, and I'm not sure how many people are in the city council chambers right now, but I can see quite a few people, participants online. So I guess I just wanna clarify for folks that maybe haven't been a part all this time that we have an agreement and we have a contract. So I don't want there to be misunderstanding that this position has been blanked and interim administrator Pietala has been doing an amazing job along with the extra work from our entire team. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Kathy. Call on a reporter.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
For the Airport Commission, no? Oh, Jackie, did you have something to add?
Yep, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Sure.
Oh, thank you. I just was worried about, you know, as long as we're going about conflict of interest, I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed with the conflict of interest. And I don't have any issue with how hard I know our staff is working. I understand that. And part of why I've been pushing so hard to get this administrator position filled is so that those folks who work in City Hall won't have to be towing the, you know, the hard load that they have been having to do. And part of why I want us to get a good administrator is to help them. And that's why I really want to make sure as far as, you know, we talk conflict of interest about anything, there is that with as far as compensation and why there has been such a long time in getting a city administrator. And I want our taxpayers to know that we are working hard to get a city administrator for whom their taxes are paying that is going to do a good job to help guide and steer our city in future decisions and endeavors. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't I don't understand what there that there would be any conflict of interest. I guess I would need more clarification on that.
I'm stating that there has been extra compensation for staff to do the city administrator's job while there has not been a city administrator in the position.
That's that's normal contractual step up pay. That, I mean, it's the Personnel Committee that's tasked with, you know, going up to Flattery and Hood and talking to them and discussing with our attorneys exactly what our plan of action is going to be for going for administrator. It's not the staff that was doing that necessarily. It was Personnel Committee and Flattery and Hood. Staff was just working on it.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, could I get the Airport Commissioner report? All right. I don't see any other committees that have met. All right, next I have a resolution approving the consent agenda items. Could you read those items in, please, Patty?
Certainly. Number one, approving minutes from the February 7th special city council meeting. Two, allowing claims against the city of Two Harbors to be paid on March 1, 2022. Three, approving payroll for the first half of February 2022. Three, a communication from Craig Samborski, draw events, rescinding his request that the city make application for a permit from the DNR for use of the property near the boat launch at Egghead Bay. Five, communication from Craig Guzzo regarding access from 8th Avenue and Curling Club Golf Course turn lanes from Highway 2 to 200 yards east of the golf course, Curling Club entrance, and fiscal disparity tax on commercial property. Six, a communication from Kelly Sawyer commenting on mayor's dealings with anonymous supposed billionaire Mr. O. Seven, hiring Colin Stein for the full-time patrol officer position in the police department. Nine, approving the request of Rachel Williams to authorize expenses to attend the Minnesota Municipal Clerks Institute in St. Cloud. Ten, approving the request of the water and wastewater treatment plan superintendent to authorize expenses for he, Mitch Exstrom, and Randy Hedin to attend the Minnesota Rural Water Conference in St. Cloud. Eleven, accepting the proposal of Segren's Home Hardware Outdoors for the purchase of a UTV for the Public Works Department for an amount of $15,747.14. Twelve, accepting the proposal of Bill's Garage Door Service through the state bid for the purchase and installation of a new garage door for the West Shop on the North Campus for an amount of $8,964. Thirteen, scheduling a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input on establishing war boundaries in the city of Two Harbors for 6:00 PM on Monday, March 7, 2022. Fourteen, calling for a feasibility report for the 2022 sidewalk improvement project. Number fifteen, authorizing the appointment of Shane Sweeney as a temporary employee at the liquor store. And number sixteen, referring to the Public Affairs Committee, potential citizen appointment to the Cable TV Commission.
Any discussion on this? So. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Reddick?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
All right, move on to unfinished business. Unfinished business item number one, is a motion to make a determination on what should be done regarding the unresolved issues referred back from the State Attorney General.
And a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we request the city attorney Costley to provide an opinion on these matters.
I will second for discussion.
All right, go ahead with discussion. Go ahead with discussion, Jackie.
Yeah, um, I guess what I want to, I just, it's such a vague motion to make a motion, and there's four different things that we could do with it. I, what I'm thinking is, is we look to the attorney general as they're just a guidance, they're not something you have to follow blindly and really think as far as, you know, we, the intelligent people of this city council, to think of what we think we should do with this as opposed to, you know, I would like to just have it be discussed among we counselors, what do you guys, folks, think is the best option to go? And get some solidification as far as where we want to go with this? I would like to have discussion about it. Thank you.
Well, I believe the motion, motion on the floor falls. Go ahead, Reddick.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to restate my motion. I hope Jackie can hear me. The motion is to make a determination on what should be done regarding the unresolved issues referred back from the attorney general, and I request that those issues be referred to attorney Costley to provide an opinion on these matters.
Mr. Chair.
I understand that, and thank you, Council Blascher. I appreciate that. But I would like to hear what other council members would like to say about the matter. If there is any discussion.
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification, Counselor Redwall, I don't know if you can hear me, this is Mayor Swanson, but basically there's a motion you seconded for discussion. If the council discusses and doesn't feel that this is the direction they want to go in, they can vote down this and then make another motion to do what they want to do. Does that make sense?
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
Yep, I just wanted to say, as providing input, that I support Counselor Glaser's motion, and I would, as I have along these entire lines, appreciated the expertise of the people in our administrative team, including our city attorney, to provide us guidance. So I would support this motion.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Miles.
I guess this is an attorney question. For number three, isn't this repetitive, retain special counsel and press that they provide an opinion on these matters? Isn't that what we send it to the attorney general for in the first place? What opinion are we looking for, whether something right or wrong was done?
Let me clarify that.
So haven't we already done number three?
I'm not sure you guys are understanding what this is about, to be clear. All right. We had sent a question to the attorney general. There are four things that could be covered, city code, city charter, city communication policy, and state statute. Four things. Attorney general took a look at it and said, well, the only one we're going to talk about is the state statute. But we're not going to render an opinion because we don't think we have sufficient facts to find that there was a violation of state statute. They said it's going back to the city attorney to render or deal with the other three issues. Was there communications policy violation, city code violation, city charter violation? They did not answer that question. They said that is more appropriately placed at the feet of the city attorney. So that's what this is about. I didn't want to leave unfinished business because it never got addressed, okay? Thank you.
Counselor Erickson, did you have something to add?
No.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, did you have something?
Yeah, I guess maybe I misunderstood, Mr. Costley, at the last meeting when you had the power presentation. What it looked like in the slide is that the that there was no contract, no financial, therefore, there's no there's no issue here is what I read it as when you did your presentation. So you're saying that's actually different?
Well, did your if you read the attorney general's opinion, it was very clear. It had said, we are not rendering an opinion on the other three.
Rule on hypotheticals. They use the word, we don't render an opinion on hypotheticals.
The city attorney should be the person that renders legal opinion on code, resolution, and charter. That's different than hypothetical.
It said hypothetical.
Well, but then you had to read.
You used the word hypothetical.
You have to read it.
It's called gossip.
I'm not going to argue with you, Mr. Mayor. The attorney general's opinion is what it is.
Well, I understand differently now, so that's good. But I understood you say something different last time. Mr. Chair, I recall the last time we had this discussion, we said we were going to send it to the attorney general, which, as you recall, I was very willing to do because I understand the law, and I actually made the motion and sent it. It came back. Now there's a decision and a discussion about should we send it to the city attorney to review it again? You know, I think what we talked about was, if that came back, that we were going to basically say it was going to go into a committee. There was going to be two people, not committee. We formed a committee.
Yeah.
Correct? And yes, we did. And we had a committee, had Counselor Woodruff and had Counselor, Counselor Woodruff was on the committee as well as as Counselor Redden. And I don't understand why we're changing what we said at the last meeting.
Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor Swanson, the committee was to be the ones that were going to look at further documents that came forward with regards to your entrepreneurship with Mr. O., and that they would look at those articles because we had several articles that were coming at us all at once. We decided that we would have an ad hoc committee look at those articles to see whether or not they needed to be referred to the city attorney for any conflict of interest or violation of city code.
Good. That's fair. Again, Mr. Chair, I think in just in this discussion, I think we've we've beat this up for a long time. There is no contract. I've I've written a letter, I've put an email to the Duluth News Tribune that our friend here, Jimmy, has received. I, the minute that there's a conflict, then we can deal with it. But there is no evidence of any sort of contract or ask of the city of Two Harbors from myself as mayor, nor is there any evidence of financial gain. And that's the one thing nobody's talking about. And that is the litmus. That is, as you described last time, Mr. Costley, what creates a conflict. I know the rules, follow the rules. And I just think it's, we're just continuing down the road. Now, I'm more than willing to send this to Mr. Costley for review, but I just want to know, how soon are we going to get done with this? How soon will this come back? Because every two weeks, we don't need to talk about this. We have capital days where we need to go and work on property that we need. We have numerous projects that we're trying to get done. We have housing issues. We have a housing emergency going on right now that I was working tirelessly on until this happened. I want to see the city invest in utilities. I want to see the city get the houses, the developers to get the houses built that we need. This is a distraction right now. The more we focus on this, the more time we take on it, the less time we have to get those things done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Kathy?
Thank you, and thank you for the dialogue. I suspect that many of the people participating in our council meetings right now, both online and in person, who I can't see, are here partially because they they're looking, they're they're seeking clarification and understanding. That is what I'm doing too, as a counselor. And again, I'll just restate that I am dependent on our administrative team, the experts in the field, to continue to provide us advice and recommendations. That's their role and their job to help us as counselors to make wise and good decisions. There are several components of this that that go outside of the statutory opinions, and I think we were still hoping to continue to get clarification. That's what I hear from constituents and others. So I would just continue to support making sure that we're able to provide that information to those folks that are seeking that as well.
And I guess where I come from right now too is, I was hoping for a lot more of an explanation from the attorney general than we got. And so I was still looking for clarification from our city attorney on if there was any violations of code, charter, or communications policy. And so that's, I was looking for, you know, a further opinion on that from our attorney in the first place.
Mr. Chair, just so you know, you don't have to hire me. You can go hire somebody else. I don't I don't have to do this. You can find an independent attorney that'll do it for you. And I put that in there as an option.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Reddick?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
Unfinished business item number two, a motion requesting the city attorney draft an ordinance amending the city code regarding procedure for citizen appointments to the city boards and commissions.
I'll move.
Second, maybe with some discussion and clarification, exactly what that means.
Mr. Chair, I have a question too. If this goes through, does that mean I am no longer a citizen appointee of Trees and Trails?
Would that be coworkers at grandfather?
That will be number three unfinished business.
Okay.
Number, the first motion is a procedural on the procedure, the second one is appointing council members, the citizen members, and the third one is a residency requirement. They're all separate.
Okay. Then we can let that one slide.
Is there any other clarification that you need to mask?
Nope.
All right.
I guess I have a question. What does this entail?
I feel like he'll, if I may. Are you going to draft the ordinance and then present it to us before?
Well, no, I need to know a little more information, okay? If I may, to make, to speed this up. This is important stuff, I understand that. But if a request is to look at the procedure for appointing people to commissions, my take on what I've heard here in the last month is that the concern is that the appointments get nominated by the mayor with the approval of the council. My understanding, what I'm hearing, is that process is being asked to be changed, or all nominations go to the council, the council then gets all applications, you make a nomination, and you vote. If I misread that, then I need more instruction on what this is about.
I would say that that's pretty close to what we were looking for. I just
I just, I want to just be clear that oftentimes, when nominations come forward from any mayor, there usually isn't a whole lot of discussion with regards to who's being appointed to a particular committee or commission, and why. And I think we can go back a few months to a specific incident with regards to the planning commission. I just want to make sure that we're following the correct procedure, that all of the counselors know they have a right to vote these things up and down. They shouldn't be a part of the consent agenda. I guess that's enough.
Go ahead, Counselor Passy.
I think the, I still don't see a procedure here. There is no, the biggest issue I see is the application form is incomplete. It does not have the background needed. And what has been happening is there has been an individual that has been contacting these applicants and forwarding their nomination. And now we are going to a procedure that isn't a procedure because we're still not having any additional information. We're not having anybody vetting the applicants. And I think that that is, there is an issue there.
Counselor Passy, that isn't what I said. I think that we do need to have that conversation. We do need to have that vetting done, except that we're not always getting all of the information from the mayor when he's bringing forward those candidates.
Mr. President, I have a statement. Thank you, if I may. I agree with Counselor Passy. I don't feel like this is a process that is broken or is hindered. It may be in a point of where something is inconvenient. But I think the process has been working very, very well for a long time. And it even would mean me, being, again, when we get to number three, removed from a committee that I very much enjoy being a productive part of. And I think it feels like a knee-jerk reaction. I feel like, you know what? Let's let the process go the way it's been going, and we don't need to fix it or tweak it because something at this point seems awkward or uncomfortable. I really, really think that we need to stay with what we've been doing. But I will let the council decide, and I will vote accordingly. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? I mean, we have, we do have a great process. I mean, I work with State Clerk Nardine, Carrie Seber to the office. We have an Excel sheet. We go through a whole process. I think if we're concerned about people who have had backgrounds serving, I think we just do a background check. I think that'd be very fair. But I don't think we have to change a bunch of stuff for a process that, after numerous appointments and creating very fair and balanced commissions, you know, a lot of our votes are 50-50, and people are really wrestling with issues, and that's healthy. And that's what we try to do, is we try to make very fair, good commissions with people, very diverse. And I think we've done a good job of that. And so I don't think having one mistake where it went through a process and it got missed, including, you know, all the way to the night of a vote. And, you know, I can dig into that and explain a lot of detail, but I'm not going to. The bottom line is, is that I don't think we have to, is that old saying? You know, if it's not broke, don't fix it. We've got, if we have a need for adding background checks, I know we do background checks for employees. I don't think it'd be that hard to do background checks for people serving on commissions.
Go ahead, Counselor Harrison.
Thank you. I think for me, what this does is, right now, there's only one person that can bring forward a recommendation. And when I asked Attorney Costley if there was an option or an opportunity for other counselors to bring forward recommendations, when sometimes there are other people that have an interest, that are not considered or aren't a part of a process for any reason, we don't have currently in the system, we have an option for that consideration. So I think, and maybe Counselor Glaser can confirm this, that was what I saw as an option. I'm not suggesting it's a replacement of. But if there is someone that hasn't been brought forward, but that a counselor feels is a person that's of value that also needs to be considered, this would allow us the opportunity as counselors to also bring forward consideration for committees and commissions. And I'll pause to see if that's where Counselor Glaser was going with this. And maybe Attorney Costley can clarify that as well.
You're correct, Kathy. I think that's part of it. I think the other part of it is, is that watching the makeup of some of the committees and commissions with regards to how people are being appointed gives me some anxiety under the light of conflict of interest versus not following the code of conduct when you have members of Mr. Swanson's employment on the Theta Commission.
Mr. Chair.
And you have, and you have completely annihilated the entire charter commission. I'm finding that with great anxiety.
These rules far better than a former mayor followed the rules. Counselor Glaser, I can go back to the record, and I remember sitting on this council. And I remember you making those same decisions. Okay? So I think, at the end of the day, that we now are getting a better understanding of who can serve and who can't. I think it's very unfair to point at those kinds of things out.
These are things that are coming from my constituents, Mayor.
I have considered every single constituent that you've sent to me. Every single one. And in fact, I've appointed some of them.
I know.
So what's the issue?
One thing that I'll just bring up too, that's a separation between both of these, is we voted every single one of the mayor's appointees as a council already. We voted them all in. So we are all 100% responsible for any appointments right now to any committee. And that's, that's the one part that I do see that, you know, maybe there can just be something added to a process to where there is more vetting and to where all of the inquiries for anything does come in through city application. And sure, the mayor can sit down and interview, as long as, you know, we all could. But, and I think that that's the reason for this, more or less too, is, you know, trying to figure out that whole vetting process. And I'm content with having a decent rigorous vetting process. But at the same time, I always felt like we were the second check. We were the checks and balances check.
Mr. Chair, if I might, and that's why I'm asking for the procedure to be reviewed, so that we make sure that we have the opportunity to see the applications and hear from the mayor on his reasonings behind appointing people to certain committees or commissions, or not reappointing people. I don't think I'm asking for a whole lot, other than, let's have a little more transparency, would be the word you would use, Chris. Let's have a little more transparency.
Mr. Chair, I would welcome bringing everybody that we're interviewing to a council meeting. I think that would be a wonderful opportunity to get to know people, hear what their abilities are, what their skill sets are. And then, as the charters, you know, suggest, the mayor makes a recommendation. And the council then is the check and balance. I think that's a good system. It's a system we have today. If we want to change the policy, I, we don't have to go and change the code. Let's just change it and run with the new system. That's fine.
Miles?
I just want to, I know how hard it is just to get members on some committees and commissions because some of them are bare sometimes. And just trying to find people to do it. I think it's pretty simple. I think the council just maybe wants to hear more about the person being recommended to it. And then we, I mean, that's it. That's my only, maybe like have a five-minute sit-down between all of us and say, hey, this is why this person's qualified. Background checks, yeah. Unfortunately, they're probably necessary. I don't want to make the whole process harder than it is because you're getting somebody that wants to serve, you know? Where's the line where you say, no? A person has a DWI, does that mean they can't be a part? You know, people make mistakes in the past, and that's a hard one with the background check. Then what qualifies or disqualifies somebody when somebody wants to serve the community? It's a hard process filling these committees and commissions. So that's, me personally, that's all I'd want to see is maybe like a five-minute. This is who this person is. This is why I think they're qualified. And that's the only thing that I think is maybe wrong with our system.
Great. Mr. Chair, welcome back. Go ahead, Counselor Harrison.
I think what we're asking for is for Attorney Costley to bring us back a recommended policy change based on this great conversation we're having right now, and based on his expertise, being a city attorney for another municipality, and getting advice from the League of Minnesota Cities and others just to make sure that whatever it is that we're going to do is in best alignment for us as a council. So again, I support that we bring this forward and have Attorney Costley use best practices, use the conversation we had tonight, and bring forward a recommendation that would help us in alignment for committees and commissions.
Does anybody else have anything to add? If not, I have a motion and a second on the floor. So I will take roll call on that.
Woodruff? Glaser? Brennwald?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
Unfinished business item number three. Requesting the city attorney draft an ordinance amending the city code prohibit the appointment of council members as citizens, members on boards, and commissions.
Mr. Chair, I go back to the same thing, so I guess we're going to end up with the same result.
Are you seconding Robin's motion?
I didn't hear you. Excuse me?
I said, are you seconding Robin's motion? I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
Robin motion, yes.
Counselor Erickson will second if we need that discussion.
Go ahead, Jackie. Counselor Brennwald?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you have some discussion on this item?
Well, no, it's just that I'm really sad that I won't be able to contribute to being part of the Trees and Trails Commission if this is the way the vote is going to go. Other than that, that is the end of my discussion. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Passy.
Mr. Attorney, was my understanding that you indicated that this is not allowed by state statute?
No, that's not my opinion at all.
So citizen members can be council members?
Let me tell you what the recommendation is from the League. And you have seven members on your commission. It says you shall appoint one council member. You have committees here that the council takes over the commission, right? So the question is, should you appoint yourself as a city council member as a citizen representative on a commission? What does the League of Minnesota Cities say? Well, you can't do that. That's a conflict of interest. These are commissions set up to be served by citizens, not council members. If you want to change your code and say you should have two council members on a commission, you can do that. Obviously, the folks that put the code together wanted only one council member on there. They would have said numerous, and there's other commissions that are different. I'm giving you the general rule. So if you want to go through each one, we can. But the question is, do you want to let a council member be a citizen member of a commission?
I believe, I believe the city code specifies that there shall be seven members of every committee, including at least one council member.
That's right.
That does not limit it to just one.
I did not say that.
Counselor Harrison, go ahead.
Thank you. Again, I think this came forward through the Personnel Committee. This was a recommendation from the Personnel Committee to bring this forward. I, on levels, understand the desire to want to participate. I think that happens in every committee and commission that we have. Just tonight, President Redden gave us our assignments, and we're not on every other committee. We're not on every committee. We're on the committees that we're assigned to. So I think that if this is similar best practice, and I think that's what we have heard, is that, you know, to have citizen members of these committees and commissions is important. And we have representation of our council who can bring back. And obviously, all of us as counselors who have interest and desire in supporting can work with that counselor who's on that committee, work through it, and have discussions at our council meetings. I don't think it precludes any of us from having the ability to share and work through that. So I will support the recommendation of the Personnel Committee.
Mr. Chair, let me make this very clear for you folks, okay? So we're clear. The chair of the council gets to appoint these council members to a commission, right? What brought this up is the mayor sits as a citizen member of the planning commission, and that was asked as inappropriate. Well, let me tell you what the League of Minnesota Cities says, so we know what we're talking about. The League says for appointments to non-elected positions, the general rule is that an official has a conflict in terms of self-interest. This conflict disqualifies the official from participating in the decision to appoint him or herself. Now, you can tell the League of Minnesota Cities to go pound sand, but that's what they give me to look at and read, and that's the guidance.
Again, Mr. Chair, it's interesting, we just talked about this earlier. You know, yes, I brought forth myself as a recommendation. And yes, the council approved it. Yes, we had a city and city attorney who never told us that that was a conflict. Nobody knew that, okay? It's really interesting, all of a sudden, stuff is coming out. Great, well, this resigned from planning and zoning. Is that going to solve the problem? Just come and ask me. That would solve the problem, would it? Not too hard. This council used to be really open and honest with each other. We used to get along. At the beginning of '22, you gave a beautiful speech about, let's get along. And now, I can't even be asked to step down off a planning and zoning commission? That's what this is all about? We're spending hours of time dealing with this?
I think part of it too is ensuring that future councils and committees are...
I can tell you that former mayors all made self-appointments.
They did.
Thank you. I'm glad everybody understands that this has been a longstanding tradition in the city of Two Harbors.
They did.
Thank you. So instead of making it sound like there's an issue with the mayor and piling it on top of one more thing, why don't we just be big boys and girls? And just talk? And just say, hey, I'm concerned about this conflict. Because it's all coming out now. That's good, it's a public meeting. I'll resign tomorrow. Problem solved, Mr. Chair?
The problem with that direct conflict, I think, would be solved.
Okay, great. That's all we have to do.
But I believe what's on the table right now is a policy decision for future.
I believe...
I don't, I think it means me appointing.
I believe we abstained, from what I recall. I was also a citizen member appointed to the planning and zoning, and I abstained, and we thought we were following the rules. So there may be some kind of, you know...
This is what the point I've been trying to make for some time, and for over a year, I've been asking our former attorney on how to clarify the conflict.
And it's pretty simple. I think any council member, I'm on, I'm on eight, go ahead, take any one of my commissions. I don't care, I'll give you my seat on there. That's not the problem, that's not the issue. We're all plenty busy. So it's like, if there is, I think, like you said, he'll resign. I agree.
If that's the findings of the League of Minnesota Cities, that's what we should do. I'm glad we're learning about all this, this is good. I don't think we have to change everything for that. I think other counselors could be appointed, if I'm understanding you correctly. Because this is only speaking if you're self-appointed or self-recommending. I'm not actually even making the appointment. By the way, our city clerk has pointed that out numerous times. The League of Minnesota Cities is saying, if I'm making the appointment, there's a conflict.
Self-appointed.
Self-appointed, so I'm not self-appointed. Not self-appointed, the appointment comes from this council. So then, I don't think there's a conflict.
Well, I do, that's my opinion.
But how am I self-appointed? We've clarified that there's not a self-appointment here, that it's the council that makes the appointments, not the mayor. I make a recommendation.
Just, Mr. Chair and Mayor Swanson, this came out of a Personnel Committee that you attended, and we talked about this. And this issue was brought up months ago when we met with Pam Whitbord. We had a long discussion. We had a long discussion about the fact that the committees and the commissions of the City of Two Harbors are made up so that citizens can participate in government. And so, along those lines, we had this conversation. This isn't, I'm not directing this at you, I'm not directing this at Jackie, I'm saying, is it right to have more than one city counselor being appointed to these committees and commissions? When, that's all I'm asking.
And, and Mr. Chair, that's the question. I think it's great when there's communication goes back and forth between the council and these commissions. That, I think, is extremely healthy. Numerous times, I've been at a meeting where, Robin, you've been at meetings where I can't attend, and I've been at meetings where you can't attend, and those are really nice times to still catch what's going on at the meeting and then be able to bring that forward. So, I, I don't have an issue with that, as long as it's not fully loaded with all counselors and we're just having another council meeting.
But again, that's the problem, if we don't have some kind of a policy or procedure, it could become a loaded commission.
If, if the council wants it that way.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm asking for the attorney to put the policy in place so that we don't have an entire planning commission full of city counselors, because that's not fair to our constituents. They could do that for us.
Well, I mean, I don't know if it's fair or not fair, I think it's the council's decision. I still know that, I, I will, Mr. Chair, I will say it, I know the interest of time has moved forward, but I feel like we're trying to fix something that's not broken, and if there's concerns and we just bring people forward, we can all look at each other and say, well, that's a counselor, shouldn't we do that? There's already two counselors on the commission. We may have a third.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Policy, every time we have a concern or something. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie, did you have something else to add?
Thank you, yeah, no, I, I think what the process is, has always been, is that the city council has the final say, and I think we should leave it at that. I mean, to change it to, to whatever, always have it run through the attorney or whatever, but the city council, all these, you know, people at the table do have the final say. So, I don't know that whatever we're talking about needs to be fixed in the, the, you know, situation that the city council still gets the final say, and if you want to, you know, make it so that no one who's a counselor or whatever can be a, a member, or, or the mayor can't appoint, whatever, but it, it's always has been and should still be, the city council gets the final say. Thank you.
Kathy, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I, I guess I just wanted to clarify that one of our main roles and responsibilities is good policy. That's one of the main roles of a city council is good policy, and I think, what, what I think this is attempting to do is to allow clear boundaries for approval or not approval, because it can become subjective versus objective, and I think that the recommendation that we might be hearing from Attorney Costley or others is in relation to making sure that there's, there's good best practice and good policy, which is why I support the recommendation of the Personnel Committee.
Need more discussion, Counselor Passy?
I would, I agree that having a council member serve as a citizen representative is not necessarily a positive thing for the board, or for a citizen board. I do, however, think that having two council members both serving on that same committee could be a good thing, because there is continuity more with the commission that is moving forward, having, so you don't necessarily swap out both council members at the same time. These would be council members, and that would be subject to appointment by the council president, and I would point out that some committees require two council members to be on.
Any other discussion on this? Mr. Attorney, did you have anything else to add?
I'll make this quick. So, you, you need to hear the stuff from us that what's, what's gonna be in the ordinance, right? If you're gonna draft it, Mr. Passy?
That's right.
This is all common, this stuff is just, it's common sense, that you gotta use your brain, like, don't overload, don't overload a committee or commission, and it's, this is really not that hard, you guys gotta use common sense.
Mr. Chair, I don't think there's any commission or committee that has more than, oh, I'm sorry, any commission that has more than two counselors.
Well, I, I'm fine with moving forward if we're gonna give them the information to change the ordinance or, or, we're gonna have to see it again before we approve it, so I'm fine with moving forward.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
No.
Glaser?
Yes.
Reddall?
No.
Passy?
No.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
No.
Reddall?
I'm sorry, my vote again?
We didn't hear you, the first one, we didn't.
I can't hear you.
We didn't get your vote.
One more time, Ben, I can't hear you.
Repeat what the motion is and what the roll call is, please, Mr. Chair.
Then I will say no, I don't think this is a good thing, no.
All right, unfinished business item number four, a motion requesting the city attorney draft an ordinance amending the city code to change residency requirements for membership on certain boards and commissions.
I'll make motion.
I'll second. Mr. Chair, just as a quick discussion, I've been contacted by multiple folks who live within the 55616 zip code, remind me that it wasn't that long ago that we changed it to allow 55616 zip code to serve, and they're very frustrated, because they feel our community is, they're part of this community, but they know they can't vote here, and frankly, the folks who have contacted me have served extremely well and are very, they've been very good commission members, and so I have heartburn over this as well.
You guys, you want to go ahead, Robin?
I'm gonna address it. And Chris, we've had this discussion multiple times, I, I find it concerning when you have citizens that do not reside within the city limits, that are serving on the planning commission and the charter commission, possibly Theta, I, you know, these are things that I think we need to look at and decide, the HRA is another one. I just want to make sure that, there, there's just, it, it bothers me that people that live outside the city limits are making decisions about how the City of Two Harbors uses their land and their zoning and makes decisions with regards to the charter that don't live here, reside here, and vote for the people that are serving office. So, that's where my concern comes in. I am not saying we need to do it to all committees and commissions, I'm not saying we have to take everybody off a commission that's on there right now, because I don't want to do that to anybody, I already got to do that once when I was mayor, and I'm not, I don't want, wouldn't want to put that on anybody else. But I think it's something that we have to look at and say, how do we make it fair? And how do we keep the best interest of the citizens within these committees and commissions? May, like you said the other day, maybe it's a matter of, let's limit it to two on the planning commission, one here, one there, I don't know. All I'm saying is, is that I don't want somebody from Duluth Township making a decision on how our city does their land use. That's not fair.
Go ahead, Counselor Passy.
I agree with Robin as far as certain, certain committees, and that's certain boards and commissions. Charter commission, I agree, yeah. Planning commission, there's a lot of business owners that are not residents of the city, and they do pay a lot of taxes to the city, so I think that in some respects, they, they are vested in the city, but, yeah, in general, they're, defining the certain boards and commissions is where the key step here.
Mr. Chair, let me speed this up for you folks. Charter commission is very basic, it's run by statute, you have to be a qualified voter in the city to sit on the charter commission, by state statute, so if that's not the case and somebody's on there, they can't sit on the charter commission, all right? HRA, that's, that's an entity that was set up by state statute, it's got an enabling resolution, a law that governs HRA, says you must reside in the area of authority to sit on the HRA, which is the city limits, okay? EDAs, Economic Development Authority, do not have the same requirement, but many do, that you must reside, or, when you get to the planning commission, a lot of cities say you either reside or own property within the city limits. That takes care of your resident, and it takes care of your business owner who does own property and has a vested interest. Those are, those are options you can think about, and not just exclude, just have residents own. It's common to say property owner, resident in a, in a planning commission, for instance, so those are some good parameters to think about. I tell you, the EDA, you should think about that as well for an EDA. If you're, if the HRA power says it should work in the area of authority, you should really, it would make sense to do the same thing for an EDA. They have more power, actually, than an HRA, so, that's just my two cents.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
So, just to clarify Counselor Passy's comment about people that own property and pay taxes, are we then saying it's open to anyone? Because we have a limitation on zip code, but if I heard what he said and his argument was, anyone who owns property should have the ability to participate, so someone from out of state or someone from the Twin Cities can also participate, I just would like clarification on that.
No, it was my intention that it was people who own businesses who do not live within city limits, spoken gear comes to mind, but that, that, I don't, I don't necessarily think somebody like CN Railroad fits that category, and I do really appreciate Attorney Costley's advice on this matter.
And so, just so I could follow up, I, I'm not sure I understand, because there could be a lot of people from Duluth, the Twin Cities, other places that own small businesses, are they eligible to serve on these committees?
I, I kind of feel like we should refer this to a committee, public affairs comes to mind, where we can sit down and figure out the exact requirements for each board and commission and, and then come back with something actually materialistic for the attorney to attend.
Mr. Chair, think about radiuses, or in Lake Colony, or, I mean, that's how you want to think about it when you're doing this. You get 20 mile, put something reasonable, that's how you can limit it.
I do have a motion and a second on the floor, do other people find it friendly to table that and send it to committee?
I'll find it friendly.
Yeah, that's friendly.
Did I? Oh.
All right. That is tabled, Kathy, did you get that?
Yep, thank you. I couldn't remember if I seconded this one, but it was the one before.
All right. Oh, and this is being moved to new business, so we are on to new business, number one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver the preliminary development agreement between the City of Two Harbors and Acre Development LLC.
This is the, Mr. Chair, this is the first one, actually, I'll move for discussion.
I'll second.
This is the, the first, the, I, I just want to be sure we read this right.
This is the, this is the gift prop.
This is the gift prop, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
I, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this resolution is the one that the ad hoc committee is supporting.
Correct.
Correct.
And the members of the ad hoc committee include the mayor and Counselor Glaser? Just want to clarify, you're supporting this?
Bumped up.
They both were.
I'm sorry, was that yes from both of them?
They both were in the affirmative on that, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion on this matter? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Reddall?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
New business item number two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a purchase agreement between the City of Two Harbors and Acre Development LLC.
Chair, move to table this item for further discussion and investigation.
Do I need a roll call on that? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Reddall?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
Yes. New business item number four, a resolution committing to certain financial obligations in conjunction with the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority for the 2022 wastewater treatment plant project improvement project. So, move?
Second.
Any discussion on this matter? If not, roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Reddall?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
Yes. New business item number six, a resolution approving the application of Craig Samborsky, president of Dry Events LLC, for a city special event permit for the Festival of Sail Lake Superior to be held August 4th through 7th, 2022, with certain conditions. So, move?
Second.
Discussion on this item? We, we already have a second on that, Jackie, but if you'd like to, if you'd like to raise some concerns or, or talk about it, go for it.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Excited that our staff got together, it's great, it sounds like things have been satisfied, and I really appreciate, it sounds like one of the concerns was liability from the city on the DNR property, and it sounds like that's been
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, I know it was discussed earlier, but it's a very exciting project going on. So the general public knows it. There's $33 million of investment being made to upgrade our sewer plant over the next three years. And it's very exciting. And there's some really neat aesthetics that are going to happen with that new project. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out. But it's a true partnership of everybody, including the state legislature. We gave up the $1125 million for it, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion on this matter? If not, roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Brenwell? Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. New business item number five. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an internship contract between the City of Two Harbors and Kendra Pham?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes. Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
Yes. New business item number six. A resolution approving the application of Craig Zamborski, president of Dry Events LLC, for a city special event permit for the festival of Sail Lake Superior to be held August 4th through 7th, 2022 with certain conditions. So move?
Second.
Discussion on this item?
I would like a second for discussion.
We already have a second on that, Jackie, but if you'd like to, if you'd like to raise some concerns or talk about it, go for it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Excited that our staff got together. It's great. Sounds like things have been satisfied. I really appreciate, it sounds like one of the concerns was liability from the city on the DNR property. And it sounds like that's been resolved in this process. So I think we have a great police staff and police force. And I think things are going to go really awesome for our community. So, thank you.
Counselor Erickson?
Can maybe Clerk Nordine clarify the difference between with certain conditions versus when we sometimes do other agreements that say pending approval or with contingencies such as licensure approvals or other things? I just want, I think earlier in our meeting, you explained that there was some general agreement to a draft. But I just want to make sure that us approving this tonight, what's being asked is that there's still all of those things that the city is expecting in terms of what I think is going to be a contractual agreement? I'm not sure, just wanting to clarify from Clerk Nordine that what exactly is still in the hopper waiting for us for approval?
The conditions are that we are still going to negotiate with the, with Craig Zamborski of Dry Events to determine payment for certain potential expenses. And those were what I listed in the previous meeting. And you should have a copy of that that I had sent you an email. Did you get that?
I did. I guess it's not clear to me in the, I mean, with conditions. I just want it to be clear in the resolution that if the city is not able to come to conclusion, does that mean that the special event permit is not able to move forward?
That's my understanding of it. Mr. Coste, do you have anything?
No, no, that's part of the deal. If they don't agree to the term, we don't give them a permit.
I guess I'd like the resolution or at least the documents to be specific to what those things are. Because with conditions is a little, if someone doesn't understand the context of the shared document, that that's included as part of the resolution.
I can make that.
No, you didn't.
Okay.
That's NBE-622822, correct?
Yep. So approval of this permit is conditioned on successful negotiation between the City of Two Harbors and Craig Zamborski for the following potential expenses. Okay.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. All right. New business item number seven. I have a motion requesting the city attorney draft an ordinance amending the city code to address the city clerk position.
Still a look for discussion?
I'll second. I guess I just need some more clarification on this.
All right. This came up. It was a question by a council member. There's concern that the city clerk position is not actually a valid position in the city. City codes of the city administrator, the city administrator should also serve as the clerk. And the charter also says that the statutory duties of a city clerk are done by an administrator. We have a city clerk. It is not in the charter. It is not in the code. It is a position, I believe, that was adopted in labor agreement, I think, back before my time. So my only recommendation is to memorialize the existence of the clerk. The statutory duties are pretty clear what those are. I don't know what else to say about it. It's true. It's not in the code. It's not in the charter. But we have a clerk. And how we got there, I don't know. I can't give you the historical basis. But it's easily remedied, if that helps.
Counselor Passy, you have something? Would it also be appropriate to have it amended in the charter agreement?
Both. Have to do both.
All right. Any other discussion on this item?
You did. Mr. Chair, I guess, I don't know if Miles will find it friendly or not, but I guess I would like to table this motion at this point. First of all, we don't have an active charter commission. So to change the code doesn't really do much without having it changed within the charter. I think there's some other discussion that needs to be had with regards to what it is we're actually looking at. So I'm not feeling real comfortable with it. So I guess I would like to table it, Miles would think.
Yeah, I just motioned it gets more clarification, but I didn't know exactly where this was coming from. So yes, I also.
May I ask a question of the attorney? It is possible for the city council to amend charter by ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
You guys would still like to table?
I would still like to table it.
Clarification? Is there a certain committee you'd like to send that to?
Public affairs.
No, I used to like you.
You know, the public affairs, I personally, I'd see that as a personnel issue, so.
I used to like you too.
I would like to see it go personnel, if that's okay.
Okay. All right.
All right. Now, new business item number eight. Is. Well, let's, can you please Patty read off Rachel Williams' request and we'll make that new business number eight? Will that be a resolution?
Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a memorandum of understanding between the city and Ask Me Local 1123 regarding vacation time for Rachel Williams.
So.
Second.
There any discussion on this item? Counselor Erickson, did you have something? Nope? All right. Sounds good. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. All right. New business item number nine. Resolution authorizing compensation for Counselor Woodruff to attend meetings of the Public Safety Committee, Chamber of Commerce Board, Edna G. Commission, THETA, Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, Waterfront Committee, and Waterfront Task Force. Excuse me, can you audience please keep it down? We're in the middle of new business, so.
Second.
Swanson, maybe. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Woodruff? Glaser?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. New business item number 10. A resolution authorizing the compensation for Counselor Glaser to attend meetings of the HRA Planning Commission, Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, and Waterfront Committee. So move?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Roll call.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Abstain.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. New business item number 11. A resolution authorizing compensation for Counselor Brenwell to attend meetings of the Airport Commission, Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, and Waterfront Committee.
So move?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Roll call.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Abstain.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. New business item number 12. A resolution authorizing compensation for Mayor Swanson to attend meetings of the Safety Committee, Library Board, Public Arts Commission, Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, Waterfront Committee, and Waterfront Task Force.
So move?
Three.
Discussions? Roll call.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Abstain.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. New business item number 13. Authorizing compensation for Counselor Passy to attend meetings of the Safety Committee, North Shore Management Board, Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, Waterfront Committee, Waterfront Task Force, and Trees and Trails Commission.
So move?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Abstain.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. New business item number 14. A resolution authorizing compensation for Counselor Erickson to attend meetings of the Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, Rec Board, and Waterfront Committee.
So move?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Abstain.
Redden?
Yes. New business item number 15. A resolution authorizing compensation for Counselor Redden to attend meetings of the Cable TV Commission, CIP Committee, and Waterfront Committee.
So move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Roll call.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Brenwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Abstain. New business item number 16. Which is unfinished business number five from the previous. So we're requesting the city attorney proceed with separation of the Two Harbors Development Fund from city control. I'm looking for a motion on that.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this item?
We have some explanation from the attorney.
Absolutely.
It came from me, so I better explain it.
Oh, good.
No, as you know, I also, when I took this job, was appointed to serve as the attorney for THDF. THDF has a revolving loan fund that they loan out to businesses. And it's comprised of members that are appointed by the council. The city does all of the bookkeeping, all of the accounting. It is a nonprofit organization, okay? I don't know how it ever got set up that the city gets to appoint board members to a nonprofit. I don't care, but it needs to change, in my opinion. That entity needs to break away like other development funds are in our region. They need to be a true nonprofit entity. They need to do their own accounting, appoint their own board members, and have nothing to do with the City of Two Harbors. We shouldn't be appointing board members to THDF. That's my legal opinion. And I think THDF is going to get to make that determination. But my advice to the city is to break that away. Sever the ties, amend what we need to amend to do that and eliminate that. Expose your liability and work for the city, because I just don't think it should have happened in the first place. That's my advice.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I don't think I disagree with those thoughts, but the original funds that were a part of this were given to the City of Two Harbors. And this was created to help support. So I think going backwards to, are we as a city giving away funds that were given through, was it Louisiana Pacific, I believe? So I have some, I understand, but I have some reservations about what that is and can. I guess I just, I need to understand that better. And without, without recommendation or opportunity that the work that's been done by that committee has gone in collaboration with some other projects and things that have happened. So this one's confusing to me. I'm not, I understand the attorney's point of view, but I think the intention of the money was different than maybe what we should have created.
Anybody else like to speak? Let's go ahead.
I have some question of the attorney. Have you reviewed and believe that it is acceptable to, with that funding, if THDF were to go, to cease operating, that money would come back to the city? Or have you looked at that?
Yeah, THDF decides, and they're in the process of deciding. Really, they have two options, to break up on their own or to wind up the operations. And if they wind up, those funds in the agreement with the city, those funds go back to the city and you put them in your EDA, for example. That's where they probably go.
Just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, maybe Patty can help me out. Does this go back to like the Starship Enterprise? Got it. Okay. Enterprise Center, sorry. Clarify what I'm talking about, the Starship Enterprise. So, yeah, because I think with that group, what were they called?
THPC.
That, was that it? Okay, so when they dissolved, then it became part of the City of Two Harbors and all that money that they had moved over. So now they want to move it out again.
We don't actually have it. It's in the Two Harbors Development Fund. But the city administrator, I mean, Miranda does the bookkeeping. We do all of the bookkeeping. So it should be settled.
Mr. Attorney, just for clarification on this vote, should I abstain from being a board member of the Two Harbors Development Fund?
You should.
Kathy's hand is up again, Ben.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
So I guess what I'm maybe also confused about is, are you then assuming that all the current members of the THDF become that group because we've appointed, I mean, that's been, or does this dissolve? And we ask someone who wants to create a nonprofit, then they can create their own trust and then we hand over the money?
My opinion is that the city should sever ties with THDF. THDF gets to decide if they want to continue or if they want to wind up their operations and return the money to the city. If that answers your question.
So then it would go back to THETA?
THETA.
Got it. Okay.
So I guess my only, I go back right to the origination of the money was that it was given to the city. It wasn't given to THDF. We made that decision or however that was created. I understand the reason why we shouldn't, but I think the source of the funds and the intention that it was meant for maybe needs some further thought, at least by me.
Any other discussion?
Help me out, Mr. Chair. Is this a motion? So there's really going to be any, like?
Yes, this is a motion.
So basically, the attorney would have to bring back some kind of resolution or ordinance or whatever so for us to make an official decision. We're just asking that that work be done right now? Am I right?
I believe so.
Unless, Mr. Attorney, Attorney would wrap it that it was not a resolution.
I just want to know if you folks want to do it. I don't want to start the process.
Got it. But it's still going to come back here for final approval.
That would be a yes.
Thank you. Does that make you feel better, Kathy?
I think the language of the resolution. I think the language of the resolution tells me he's going to create it to be done and people can sign on it. I feel like we're saying by the, the, the motion I'm reading is telling us we're choosing to separate. But tell, if, if, if we're clarifying that we're gonna get the actual final resolution to separate in a future meeting. But I hear his point is he doesn't wanna go to all this work if we're gonna come back and say, nope, we changed our mind.
And just what I would say to that is, you know, Counselor Erickson, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but, um, a lot of what you say towards a lot of this is we trust our staff. We, we trust our city attorney to make the best determinations. And this was brought forward by him saying this absolutely needs to happen. There needs to be a separation from the Torbs Development Fund and the City of Two Harbors. Correct, Mr. Attorney?
Hundred percent.
Where the money goes right now is, that's a secondary issue, correct?
Well, I think it's a primary issue if we're, I mean, if it's gonna land with them by making this resolution, I think it's a big issue.
How do you feel about that?
Well, I mean, it's clear. If THDF says, yep, we wanna keep going as a nonprofit, they have the money. The only way the city gets it back is if that entity folds or winds up, we could call it. I will tell you, I'm not aware of a development fund in northeast Minnesota that is not an independent nonprofit. And runs itself.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Kathy, did you have anything else to add? Your hand raised there?
Yeah, um. I, this is not, I, I don't under, I get it. I get why we shouldn't have THDF anymore, but I'm still unsure of where the money's going. And I don't think I understand, based on some of the changes and makeup of that commission over the past couple of years, I, I guess I just, I'm, this one's a hard one without having backstory and having it just come to the council.
All right. I'm just gonna vote.
Robin. Oh, did I? Second by Swanson.
Yep, second by Swanson.
Um, let's use the S M language. Well, what I guess, what I'm gonna ask then, um, our counselors more inclined to table this and send it to finance and let them talk about it there? If it has to do with money, Kathy, what do you think?
That would be fine. I mean, I, I get the concept. I guess I just don't understand where the money's going. And I guess if we could get that clarified and that is even just, if it refers to finance, it's fine. Or if we can just get that clarification, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that this one's hard for me, but I, I have, I, I was formerly on THDC before I was a city counselor, so I understand the history behind the original intent before it got broken up by a former council and was created, the THDF and THETA were created as two separate entities as the breakup of that original. So, and again, I don't disagree that there was maybe an error made in the creation of the position, but I, I think the funding is still in question for me. So I, I guess I would appreciate understanding that before I vote, but if the president wants to bring it forward.
Mr. Chair, did I understand, did I understand, Tim, for you, you said, if I understood correctly, that you can get the agreement drafted in a way where the city would get the money back? Or there's a way to do that?
Well, there's an agreement between the city and THDF that says if THDF folds, the money goes back to the city.
Okay.
That's the agreement. So THDF has to make its own independent determination. They, they may say, we're gonna fold their tenant, here's the money, you can have the fund. I don't know what they're gonna do yet. They're in the process of discussing that, so. But to me, I don't care. I want, I want a separation as your attorney. That's my wish.
Can, can, can the city just disband THDF without it, or is that not an option?
No, it's just, it's a, well, it's separate nonprofit, so we can't do that.
What would you guys like to do here?
Um, I'm willing to table it if, uh, the rest of the council wants to go that way. Otherwise, um, I'm okay with calling for a vote. So I guess that's where I'm gonna go with it. I made the motion, so, um, Chris, do second it.
What, I'm sorry. My dad is actually really ill right now, so I'm feeling bad. Um, so what was the?
Do you, do you feel covered?
You were the second on the table. Would you like to, uh, find a way to table this for now so that, uh, Counselor Erickson could get more clarification as well as any other concerned counselors and, um, or would you like to see the?
I think we should move forward on the vote. I think, I think I trust the attorney and the, you're on this as well, Ben, so I think it's, it's being figured out and I think it'll be figured out, so.
All right. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Renwald? Renwald? Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Redden?
Abstain.
Renwald?
Take cares?
All right. New business item number 17, referring to Public Affairs Assistant Member to the Cable Commission. Does that sound correct? Any discussion on this item? Kathy, did you have something? Counselor Erickson, sorry. Nope? All right. Any other discussion on this matter? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glaser?
Yes.
Renwald? Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
That concludes our new business, correct? I didn't have any more to develop. All right. Announcements? Are there any this evening?
Mr. Chair, the only announcement I have is, uh, we're heading down to Capitol Days. Um, should be, uh, a really good time to get together with our representatives and talk about thanking them as Counselor Glaser pointed out, thanking them for the, uh, the $11.5 million, uh, bond that they gave us and then, um, talk with them about things like DNR property and, and other good things. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. So move?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes.